Okay, we're gonna call this a public hearing to order. I'd invite everyone in attendance, please join and rise me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Councilwoman Barnum, Councilman Pritikun.
Here.
Councilman Sealy.
Here.
Councilwoman Sgroback, Supervisor Bellow.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thanks Barb. There's one agenda item tonight, and it's a public hearing for the 2015 Aronacoye Town Budget. I need a motion to open the public hearing in a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed nay. Motion carries. What we're going to do to start off the public hearing tonight is I'm gonna start with a short presentation about the 2015 budget, what's included in there, and then after that, what we'll do is those who had a chance to sign up, I'll invite you to come forward and speak and offer your input on the budget, and then anyone who did not have a chance to sign up prior to the public hearing but would like an opportunity to address the Board will be invited up to do so after we get through the list. Okay? So just bear with me for one minute. Barb, you can pull the screen down. The Board, join me down on the floor here. Alright, good, that works. Is this on? Alright. Okay. So, in crafting the 2015 budget, the Town Board basically had three operating principles around which, like I said, this budget was crafted. The first one was that we would hold the tax rate, the property tax rate in this budget flat. It's the town of Aronacoye, it's no secret pays a very high tax rate comparable to other communities, and it was a priority of this Board that in order to attract new development, keep our families here, attract new families into Aronacoye and maintain our property values, that we not increase the tax burden on our families and businesses. So the first principle in crafting this budget was to hold the tax rate flat. And the other two principles essentially revolve around efficiency and rate of return. And to make sure that we, this town government and the departments that we have are organized as efficiently as possible to ensure that we're offering our residents the greatest rate of return in their investment in their government, and making sure that the services that they're receiving are top-notch and that for every dollar we're putting into town government, you're getting at least a dollar back in services. The functions in the 2015 budget are, it's a little difficult to see on the screen, I think, if you're in the back, but it's a $32.2 million budget. About 12% of the budget is spent on general government expenses. These are your admin fees and the fees associated with our administration departments. We have a public safety that's primarily our police department and our school crossing guards. They make about 33.5% of the town expenditures. Transportation is about 19%. Economic assistance and home and community projects is 22%. Culture and recreation activities and programming make up roughly 13% of the budget. Of those expenditures, about 40.5% of the town budget is spent on personal services. This is our salaries for our staff, both our full-time and part-time staff. 27% of that goes to employee benefits. So you can see 67% of our budget is spent on our staff and benefits. 21% goes to our services and supplies. This is the contractual services that the town signs with service providers. This is the supplies. This is the asphalt. This is the, all the things that go into making the government run. And then about 10% of the budget is spent on debt service. Our sources of revenue, about 51% of our revenue is derived from property tax, 11% from sales tax, and then from various other sources of revenue, there's fees and fines is about 8.9%, mortgage tax 2%. This, again, this is gonna speak to a need to a few of the priorities that I'm gonna lay out into the budget, the fact that our property tax makes up such a large distribution, a large percentage of the total revenue coming into the town. Because we're such, we're a relatively residential community, largely built out, we don't have as much commercial opportunity that you'll see in other communities, and therefore property tax, particularly on our residential properties, make up an outs share burden on the town government. And this will speak to a few priorities we have in a moment and how we're working to change that. The taxable assessed value in town has been relatively stable, but we are reversing the trend that we've seen of a slight decrease. You'll see in years 2010, 11, 12, and 13, we've seen a slight decrease each year in the taxable assessed value of the properties. Again, that creates another stress on our tax rate. This last year and this year, or this year and next year, we're seeing a reverse in that trend with a small increase this year in the assessed value, and then next year we're looking at about a $10.5 million increase in the assessed value of our properties in town. And then related to that is the property tax rate. And again, this is the amount of money that we need to raise from property taxes to fund the government divided into the assessed value. So here we have, like I said, a 0% tax increase in 2015. The tax rate will remain the same at $6.51 per thousand. This will be the fifth year in a row that the town has had the same tax rate going forward. Now, one thing that I've been very clear about in the beginning of the budget is that I view budgets more than just a document of numbers and dollars and cents. Budgets are also a statement of priorities, and sometimes it's hard to see where those priorities are in the budget documents. So I wanted to have a small discussion here first to tell you what those are and sort of pull those out. Town government is organized essentially into six departments. We have our administrative department, which includes all the functions of our comptroller's office, human resources, attorney, information services, assessor, and town clerk. We also have our police department. This includes our officers who are on the street. This includes the animal control function as well as our school crossing guards. The school crossing guards are provided by the town, not by the school districts. We have the neighborhood and business development department, and this is critical. This department used to be known by many different names. It used to be called the development department, the community development department, various names. So what we decided to do was take this department, rename it, and refocus it, so that it's clear to the residents exactly what we're trying to do here, and that's why this department's called the neighborhood and business development. It houses our planning and zoning efforts, our code enforcement, building services, fire marshal, and all our economic development activities that are geared toward trying to grow that tax base. And again, we'll talk about that in one minute. We have our courts department. We have three part-time town justices who work across the parking lot, and their staff of clerks and support staff. We have the library, and then we also have what we call our community services department. This is a department that houses all the other departments, bureaus, and functions that provide a direct service to our residents. So this includes our DPW department, the services they provide in the roads and street maintenance, snow plowing. It also includes our cemetery, our historian. It includes our parks functions, and it also includes all of our recreation programs from our senior programs, adult and youth and family programs, and our special events. The first department that you'll see a change in from 2014 to 2015 is the police department. I draw your attention to the fact that over the last several years, we've seen a 15% decrease in the size of our police force. And over that same time period, we've seen an increase in certain crimes such as property crime and certain violent crimes. This budget reverses that trend by increasing the size of the force by adding a police officer to the force. Part of the reason for this and why this was a priority for the Town Board was because a lot of the other priorities and a lot of the other things we want to do in town, whether we're growing our commercial corridors, attracting new businesses, trying to keep families here, bringing new families into our community, all those things we want to do aren't possible if people don't feel safe and they aren't in fact safe in their homes. And so, we really wanted to make sure we renewed our commitment to that, reversed that trend of a decreasing force with increasing crime by tackling it head-on. So that's the first priority of the budget. The second one I talked to you a minute ago about was the neighborhood and business development. What this budget does is it fully implements the reorganization that we began earlier this year. This department was reorganized by bringing in a new deputy town attorney. We brought in for the first time in the recent history, a new planning and zoning administrator, someone to really focus on our planning efforts, which has already started to see some benefits, especially when we talk about our comprehensive plan. We also, it brings in a renewed focus on economic development, where we have the staff now available to do a proactive marketing approach to Aronacoye and be able to put together these strategies to try to attract new businesses to town and be more proactive. Like I said, I think this department's already starting to have an impact when you look at new developments coming to town like the Starbucks and Chipotle that are coming to town, Sonic, Aldi's. I Square is working with this department. The new library is largely being built under the auspices of this department, as well as the new comprehensive master plan that came out and was approved by the Board. We've been working on this since July and was approved by the Town Board last month. And that was the first plan the town has had in about 30 years. So that's all the types of functions and things that came out of that department. The third change comes in the community services department. And again, like I talked about, this is where we really went through an administrative organization to be able to put all the different functions and departments that go into providing direct services to our residents under the same department to try to reduce administrative costs while also providing more services and more programs to our residents. And now, what I'll say about this too is I understand that there is a concern about the perception that the programs, the recreation programs and the DPW department and things like that, and those functions that don't seem to be related are being merged, but the truth is, as you can see from this tree, this organizational chart here, is that the parks and the recreation functions are still gonna exist, and they're gonna exist the way they are, they're just gonna be within the community services department. So this budget in fact pulls those two, those functions actually out from how they used to be. Those two functions used to exist as one department, as a combined budget. What this budget does, and I'll point you to the first pages of the actual outline of the budget, actually pulls the parks function out as its own separate budget, so you could see what's being spent where in that, and it pulls the recreation and playground budget out aside into its own budget as well. And this is no different than how a lot of other communities are organized. We see it in Pittsburgh and Greece and in the city. It works like that for them as well, and so I want you to take a look at that and see how all these other towns are organized as well. And I've also heard concerns about our special events, and I agree, our special events are special, and that's why, and they're really what makes Aronacoye unique. And so the special events coordinator who's been here, who's been managing our Fourth of July, they've been managing the Oktoberfest, they've been working with the farmers market, that's gonna continue to receive, and all those events are gonna continue to receive the same level of support that they've received in the past, if not more. And for our recreation programs, the recreation supervisor who's in charge of the recreation programs now will remain in fact, and is also gonna be given additional staff and additional resources to expand those programs, including a new recreation leader. And that goes the same for our senior programs as well. There's a recreation supervisor and staff who's in charge of our senior programs who will remain there as well. And so when you look at the totality of the budget, what you really see is a reorganization of responsibilities that relieves administrative costs for the benefit additional boots on the ground to grow the recreational programs. And what are those resources and what are those additional opportunities? In the recreation department, what we've included was a 37% increase in expenditures for the maintenance of our park facilities in Camp Eastman. There's a 35% increase in the maintenance and enhancements of the fields at McEvoy Park. 126% increase in expenditures for our summer recreation programs. A 22% increase in expenditures for our winter programs. A 24% increase in expenditures for fees associated with field trips to summer camps. These are the field trips that, you know, the woodcraft camp that we have, it's a very popular camp in town in the summertime. This is the field trips that they take when they go to sea breeze or they go to museums. This provides more funding to give them more opportunities to go on these field trips that our youth have been taking advantage of for decades. This also hires a full-time recreation leader. That's the additional staff I talked about under the recreation supervisor, who's gonna oversee these additional recreation programming. And it also includes a 59% increase in summer playground camp counselors. Now, the summer playground camps, if you grew up in Aronacoye or you have kids now, you'll know, these are the free camps that we offer. They're free of charge to residents, and when I was younger in town, we used to have a lot of them. They were, most of the schools had these summer playground camps. They were a source of pride in our neighborhoods, and they were also free. They gave kids and our youth an opportunity to have some recreation programs, some supervised program over the summer when they're not in school. Over the years, the number of those camps has been reduced significantly. So what this budget does is it adds another camp. So we'll be able to at least open at least one additional summer camp next summer, which is also, like I said, free to the residents in town. What is also happening concurrently with the budget is that the Town Board is also taking under consideration in November the 2015 capital improvement plan. Included in the capital improvement plan is $143,000 to update our neighborhood, our playground equipment in our neighborhood playgrounds, and we'll also renovate and modernize the town spray park at Camp Eastman. I think this addresses some of the deferred maintenance that's been done to some of our playgrounds over the years. And again, these are a source of pride, I think, for our residents. We, you know, we have these great little playgrounds that are located in neighborhoods throughout town, and I do believe in some way they've been neglected, so the town is looking at ways to improve those. This also includes $50,000 to construct additional soccer and lacrosse fields at Camp Eastman. This is adding to those field opportunities for the local sports teams. The town right now does not have a lot of those. They're mostly reliant on the school districts. So this changes that and allows the town to be able to offer those as well. And it also includes $100,000 to upgrade our lodges at Camp Eastman. And again, this is, I think, an issue of deferred maintenance over the years. Anyone who's rented lodges before at Camp Eastman knows what condition they're in. They're older lodges and older facilities. So this budget includes enough money to start renovating them, bringing them up to speed, which again, these are used by residents, they're rented, and actually they're quite busy, and they're also used for some of our camps. So again, just in closing, I just wanna reiterate some of the priorities that we're in this budget, pull a few things out. The first one is that again, it's a 0% property tax increase. It holds the total spending increase to just below 2%. And it also has an increased focus on three areas within town, within our town services. The first one is law enforcement by adding to the police force to keep our residents safe. The second one is economic development, which should have a few benefits if we're continue to be successful here in growing our tax base to relieve pressure on the property tax, and then as well, the additional funding and focus on our recreational activities and our recreation programs. Okay? So that's what's included in the budget. If you have any questions about that, I do encourage you to please email me at supervisor@aronacoye.org. And what we'll do next is, if you just give us a couple minutes to move the podium back and turn the projector off, we'll call you up one at a time, like I said, and we'll start the public input portion of this. Alright? Thank you. How to turn this part off? No, no, Nate's coming up to move it real quick. Oh, alright. Should be good. Okay. Good. Ready to go?
Yeah, just a minute.
Okay. Okay, thanks for your patience in our transition there. The first speaker signed up today is Donna Picora.
Good evening Supervisor Bellow and Town Board members. I'm here tonight to let you know of a problem I'm having with the future at the Aronacoye Farmers Market. Supervisor Bellow, you have shown in the past 10 months you have the ability to manage the town of Aronacoye. That is, of course, with one exception, the removal of the Director of Parks and Recreation. We need to know that there will be no interruption in moving forward with our market. I've managed the market for going on six years. In the past three, statistics show it has grown and said to be one of the best town-run markets in the county. Like I said, I manage the market, but the ideas in the constant direction from someone with the experience and background have come from the director. The director is the one to go to with problems that arise from time to time, and having to depend on someone from DPW to be on site at a moment's notice is not something we think is the way to go. I can't see that someone working with streets and sewers can mediate a problem with our vendors over who's selling tomatoes, or sticking around until 11 o'clock at night managing 600 excited children on a movie night at the market. Also, if there's a problem in the town on a Thursday night, we both know that this problem would be DPW's priority, not the farmers market, which will leave us hanging. Taking all this into consideration, we feel the town's parks and recreation programs should be run by an experienced and full-time director that is solely dedicated to making fun for young families. Please reconsider this removal. Thank you, from the staff at Aronacoye Farmers Market.
Thank you Donna. The next speaker is Carolyn Stahl. Hi.
Thanks for having me.
Absolutely.
If there's one thing I've learned as a resident and a Realtor in Aronacoye, it's that actual truth and what people believe to be their truth are two different things, and they can be very separate things. And I think the former Aronacoye mall is a perfect example of this. No matter how many times the paper printed that crime was lower there than at other malls, that there were in fact no ankle slashers waiting under your car, people still did not want to shop there. It was a perceived truth that contributed to the demise of the mall and of this town. When parents at my child's preschool heard of the elimination of the Director of Parks and Rec, many said things like, typical Aronacoye, one step forward, two steps back, or worse. Now it's really time to move to Penfield. Even if you claim this reorganization was not done in a way that sacrifices recreational programs and opportunities, that is not the perceived truth. Because it's hard to believe that the person in charge of manning the department had so little to do with its growth that the entire position is now unneeded. It's hard to believe that the DPW, whose job it is to manage roads and sewers, is now capable of absorbing an entire recreation department. And it's really hard to believe that the savings of hiring a lower ranking employee to help spread out the duties of a rec director is really a wise investment for our future. In the letter you sent to many residents, you cited the myriad increases, which you also mentioned today, in expenditures for the Parks Department. It makes it hard to believe that eliminating the director is really a decision based on frugal prudence when you see numbers like this. Many towns in the greater Rochester area have recreation directors, Brighton, Penfield, Parenton, Pittsford, Parma, Gates, Ogden, Webster, Chi-Li. What will be the perceived truth about Aronacoye when in 2015 we don't have one? We will have one of the smallest recreation staffs in the greater Rochester area. What message is that gonna send about our town? We've already taken such a huge blow with our school budget not passing, do we really need another thing that makes people think Aronacoye is not investing in its future, even if we all know that's not true? It seems true, and to this Aronacoye resident and I think to everyone here, it feels true. And unfortunately, sometimes that is all people need to make up their minds. Please don't do this. Help change the conversation about our town.
Thank you. The next speaker, Megan Spatola.
Mr. Bellow and members of the Town Board, my husband and I both grew up in this town, and we chose to stay and raise our family here. We're not pleased with your decision to cut the position of Director of Parks and Recreation from the 2015 budget. In fact, we find this move to be completely irresponsible and short-sighted. In your State of the Town address in May, you specifically created, excuse me, specifically credited the work of Mr. O'Brien and Ms. Hall for increasing recreation programs 200% over the last four years. They facilitated progress in our town, and now your proposed budget derails that progress.
Mr. Bellow, you claim that this cut is not motivated by performance, but rather for budgetary purposes. In your letter dated to us October 29th, you stated that it was your duty as a public official to look for ways to organize more efficiently in order to reduce administrative overhead. Let's be honest, government generally isn't known for efficiency, yet cutting out the leadership, the leadership of a department that has grown programs significantly in four years, in fact, he may be the one that deserves a raise and more responsibility. Mr. O'Brien created room in the 2015 budget for the proposed recreation leader in an effort to further expand programs. He did this while maintaining his position as director and keeping the budget the same as 2014. Parks and Rec was on track to continue its forward progress by adding to this department, but the budget cut sends the department reeling backwards.
You must have great faith in the abilities of the Commissioner of Public Works since you're proposing to move Parks and Rec under DPW. The Commissioner oversees so many people, projects, and schedules. It seems that position requires multiple levels of management rather than hands-on engagement. I struggle to comprehend how anyone in the DPW Commissioner role could adequately participate in Parks and Rec activities and day-to-day responsibilities with the same hands-on engagement that the current Parks Director does. The current Parks Rec Director has a degree in Recreation Management, a Master's in Public Administration, and over 20 years of experience in the Parks and Rec field. This kind of education and experience cannot be found in an entry-level recreation position and cannot be replaced by public works personnel who, no doubt, have vital experience and a skill set tailored for their job, not Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Bellow, we applaud your efforts at maintaining the property tax rate for 2015 based on total appropriations of approximately $32 million. However, the reorganization of an entire department, all to save 10, 15, maybe 20,000, as you alluded to earlier, it's tough to tell exactly what that number is. It just doesn't seem to add up. We implore you to reverse the reorganization of the Parks and Rec Department and make this cut elsewhere. Give Mr. O'Brien the opportunity to find that savings and find that savings again. Mr. Bellow and Board members, we call for you to do right by your constituents and keep the town moving forward by reinstating the position of Director of Parks and Rec for 2015.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. The next speaker is Mary Ellen Jones.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to comment on a few things that jumped out for me on this year's town budget. First of all, let me say thank you to Adam and the rest of the Board for presenting a budget that does not include a tax increase.
All right, thank you. The next speaker is Mary Ellen Jones.
Good evening. I just wanted to take the opportunity to comment on a few things that jumped out for me on this year's town budget. First of all, let me say thank you to Adam and the rest of the board for presenting a budget that does not include a tax increase. Many senior citizens around the country have had to give up their lifelong homes because of continued tax increases on their property, and I don't want Arundicoid to become a town where that keeps happening. There are also a couple of things that are near and dear to my heart, and I'm glad to see them addressed this year. Camp Eastman to me has always been a hidden treasure for Arundicoid. But having recently used one of the facilities, I can tell you firsthand the treasure has gotten pretty tarnished. How lucky we are to have such a facility so close to such a wonderful natural resource like Lake Ontario, and to be able to enjoy recreational activities in view of the lake, and we should never let them fall into disrepair. I am also sure they are an ongoing revenue for the town, so upgrading them makes good sense fiscally in the long run as well. I've also attended many of these meetings through the years and heard people constantly complaining about not enough fields for children's athletic activities. So I was even more pleased to see that new fields are included in this endeavor. Clearly, the recreation programs in town are going to receive much-needed attention. While I would never advocate anyone losing a job, as a lifelong teacher, I must say that when it came time for layoffs, my goal was always to keep the money where it had the most direct impact on the students and not on administration. It would appear that this is what the Town Board has done in choosing programs over administration. Lastly, I note that an officer has been added to the police force, and the safety of our town is certainly a concern of all. I applaud the Town Board for preparing a budget that puts our children and the town's safety in the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker signed up is Adam Pishi.
Prepare remarks for tonight. I intended on coming in with an open mind and seeing what the budget had to offer. I'm the father of a five-year-old. I am a transplant. I don't have a history here in Arundicoid. The fact that you were able to keep the tax rate flat while increasing the police force, I think that's obviously something that needs to happen. The fact that you're able to keep the tax rate flat while increasing what appears to be the budget into the Parks Department, not an individual indictment apparently on anybody, but it does seem, excuse me, that with the failed budget in West Arundicoid, for example, that you have things like the soccer clubs and the swim clubs that are really seeing an increase in cost and the amount of land in this town. There should be more fields. There should be more of an investment into those things to ease the responsibility of the school budget's burden and that sort of thing. So I applaud you guys for keeping the tax rate flat while increasing, what appears to be increasing the programming in that department.
Thank you. The next speaker is Debbie Evans.
Hi, everyone. I came here tonight because I wanted to commend all of you. I wanted to commend this Town Board and our supervisor for doing what is extremely difficult. Having sat where you are now seated, I know that it's really difficult to do more with less. And I'm really proud that you were able to keep our tax rate flat while investing in our youth, community, and our families. I see as a parent, as a parent in the east Arundicoid School District, we watched program after program be deleted from the town and more and more programs come over to the west side. For the past 15 years, I was coming to the town and asking for them to put those programs back in, particularly the playground camps for summer programs. And we never got those done, and I'm so glad to see that you're finally being able to do that. You're restoring field trips and programs that had previously been cut. My kids who grew up going to Woodcraft were, they loved going to Seabreeze and going to the different museums, and I'm glad that those things are put back in the budget. I'm grateful that you're also putting in upgrades to McAvoy Park and to Camp Eastman because we don't want those things, our treasures in town, to become outdated. I understand that there are things that hurt in our town when you make cuts, but one of the things I heard since the spring was why can't we make more cuts in administration? Why is it that we always have to hurt the kids? And I think that with this type of what you did was you gave the programs back to the kids. I think you heard what those parents were saying, and I think that that shows that you were listening. So I thank you for that.
Thank you, Debbie. The next speaker signed up is Jeff Goldblatt.
Good evening, Jeff Goldblatt, 128 Parkside Crescent. This is my 23rd budget presentation. As in the past, I may mention certain companies by name for purposes of clarity. I do not have any employment or financial relationship with any such firm. Also, I will be going in order as these items appear in the budget more or less. I have seven areas to bring up, and without interruption, I'll go through this as quickly as I can. The first is information services. And this really ties in with code enforcement. I was recently informed that finally, after years and years, some information in regards to solid waste has finally appeared on the town's website, though I suspect there's probably more that can be added. If it hasn't been, most notably, and what I have seen throughout the town this particular given year, is a lack of information on what to do when it comes to old televisions and old electronic equipment. Why? Because the county has completely failed to promote the existence of Eco Park. This information does need to be on the town's website. This will save code enforcement time in having to go out on trash calls because somebody left their equipment out and either got destroyed by one of the scrap metal guys or someone finds it unsightly. Also, from a public safety standpoint, there's a national public safety campaign called Slow Down to Get Around. Given that, and I'm sure your police department will confirm, that the plague of distracted driving shows up around here. I've seen a couple of near misses myself. They have not only television spots that can run on iCat, and this is free information, also decals that can appear on town vehicles. And I can provide that information in further detail at a later time. Speaking of code enforcement, back in 1995, a provision was entered into the town code requiring commercial businesses to have dumpster enclosures for a number of reasons. Believe it or not, all these years later, and by my count, there is still some two dozen commercial properties that are not in compliance with the code. Prior boards and prior administrations have decided this wasn't important. Dealing with this now will generate a little bit of revenue in terms of building permit revenue as well as sales tax revenue. In terms of public safety, and again, your police chief and your fire marshal will confirm that there is still an issue in town regarding house numbers. There have been previous town boards where people have sat and said, yep, you're right, we got to get this done, and it's still not done. This went into the code in 1991, and there are still homes that are not in compliance. I would suggest with both of these things that this board set a deadline once and for all to get these things done once and for all. There will be a little sales tax revenue as people have to go to the store to get the right numbers for their house, and afterwards, you impose a fine. It may seem funny, I'd hate to turn on the news some evening and say there was a tragedy in Arundicoid because emergency services couldn't find a home on such and such a street. Removal violations, specifically grass. While the town has ultimately reimbursed, this does become somewhat problematic when it comes to zombie homes, and I'll talk about that at the end. It also ties up equipment and manpower which can be used elsewhere. Grass cutting is really not an intensely high-tech type of skill, and therefore, I would suggest that this can be bid out, not only to take care of problem homes, but to take care of town properties. A successful bidder would be treated like the haulers, who would have to supply proof of insurance and a performance bond, which eliminates the question of, well, how do we know they're any good? They have to provide proof and references. Were that to be successfully completed, the existing equipment would be declared surplus and sold, and the men reassigned to other work. In terms of Parks and Rec, and I know the longstanding rule, which is not to discuss personnel matters before this board, and I will honor that. But there are a couple of operational things that need to be addressed. Number one, I was glad to see that finally, after years, and I can't believe that the Rojas family hasn't screamed bloody murder about the condition of Joshua Park. Finally, the gravel pits, which have been nothing more than a collection spot for overgrown weeds, have been removed. Hopefully, there is money in the budget this year to complete the renovation in terms of new turf, and also to replace the town seal on the Joshua Park sign at the Seville entrance, and this time perhaps putting it under a little bit of tinted glass so it does not get bleached out by the sun a second time. I'm also going to use this part to talk about the refuse and recycling bid, which is what it's supposed to be properly called. I wish I had seen this before this went out last week because there is opportunities for improvement on every facility. While this is not as bad, I want to be clear, is while there is room for opportunities, this is not as bad as the situation that exists in the west Arundicoid schools, which is flat out of control, where tens and thousands of dollars of our money have been squandered over the last 15 to 20 years. Sorry, boosters, that's a fact. In terms of Parks and Rec, for example, to me, it is unconscionable that after all the years that we've been recycling in Arundicoid going back to 1970, that we cannot have cans and bottle recycling at this event. It all gets trashed, and there's no provision for it in the new bid. There is an alternative, which I'll discuss in a moment. Or, for example, at the police department. Our police do a fine job, but you also have to pay to have a lot of shredded paper. They have a lot of confidential information understood. It's a rental on equipment, someone to shred paper, and service. When nowadays, banks and other institutions are utilizing curbside shredding, someone needs to see, is there a savings involved in doing the same work as opposed to what you're doing right now? Or the highway department has two eight-yard containers. I think they look like 10s, but it says eight. Would it be easier to switch to one 20-yard roll-off with a hard top? And you're just swapping out containers. I can go through each of these things, but those are just a few examples. And while there is a provision going and looking at page three of the bid that says the changes can be made, given that this has just gone out to door, I don't know if there's a way that additional savings can be had or if we have to wait two years until the next bid goes out in order to achieve additional savings in this regard. I mean, just in terms of the Fourth of July alone, we have barrels with peeling paint, which I'm sure doesn't make much of a good impression, especially when people are visiting here, or the barrels that kill the grass. A roll-off and an oversized roll-off in a high lift, one as everybody knows, a roll-off is a portable dump truck body, and the back door opens. All these little things start to add up and cost more money. The Fourth of July event in terms of this needs to be completely rethought because it's been wrong for many, many years. Now, in terms of recycling, and since there's no provision for it in the bid, we have an Arundicoid business called Ridge Nickelback. And in their ad, it says that they have free use of our fundraising trailer for any of your events. Here's an idea. If they'd be willing to engage with us, you could have a situation where, you know, Town Board every year draws a name out of a hat of a nonprofit entity in our town, and the proceeds go there. This way, that material is not going out to RIGA where it doesn't belong. The cemetery. While it may be a nice thing to have, the fact is, in my opinion, it is a sideline enterprise that's not core to day-to-day life in the town. Currently, this is costing nearly a quarter of a million dollars with revenue making up less than half. In my opinion, it is time to turn this over to another entity in order to manage and generate more business. There's a publicly-held company called Stone Moore, and they work with a number of entities around the country, including churches where parishes have run into financial problems and others. They manage cemeteries and funeral homes. Why not reach out to them and see if there's a way that a deal can be done to take some additional cost off the books? I'm sure the people there aren't going to matter too much. And when I see in the solid waste bid that we're getting extra pickups there, it's like, if we're talking about opening up graves with dirt and so forth, why isn't Highway dealing with this? Building maintenance. Currently, this is costing nearly a half a million dollars just for this building and the public safety building, and there's no delineation in the rest of the budget for the other buildings in town. That's a lot of money. While it's nice to have our buildings in good shape, that's rather costly. In my opinion, I believe this needs to be bid out as well. There are any number of firms who I'm sure would like to bid on the town's business. Again, to answer the question, how do we know they're any good? References, performance bond, proof of insurance. One firm, and again, I have no interest, I happen to pick this up at the Small Business Show at the convention center every year, is a company called Midnight Janitorial. And besides sweeping and emptying waste baskets and whatnot, they offer a number of other services, including carpet edging, dusting, and vent cleaning. They've won any number of awards, and they're involved with the community with entities such as Junior Achievement, the Salvation Army Center for Youth. If I owned a business, I sure would be looking hard at a company like this. And there may very well be others. But when it's a half a million dollars just to two buildings, and who knows what the rest of the cost adds up to, that needs to be reexamined. In terms of solid waste, we license the haulers that operate in town, but I believe that we are still missing a number of them, most notably the roll-off haulers who are not here all the time. There was discussion about this years ago, and the thought was since it was spot work not to license them. Along the way, someone made the decision to open it up. You cannot, just like dumpster enclosures and house numbers, you cannot have a situation where some companies are licensed and others aren't. I sent a couple of notes along to Public Works in regards to, for example, reaching out to the commercial roofing companies who hire these firms. And they need to understand that we license. And just like the other four towns that do, this is administered through Public Works with licensing, and I could never, and everyone's ever been able to explain why licensing goes through Public Works instead of the town clerk's office, since that's what they're here for, to issue licenses. Hopefully, some more of the roll-off guys will be brought in, which again would generate some additional revenue. In terms of the yard debris program, I keep seeing that we purchase replacement trucks, but we're doing the same thing that we've done right along. The company that the town utilizes, Peterson Industries, has a larger vehicle, which would, from a productivity standpoint and a reduction in cost standpoint, probably be able to get you back from three trucks to two. And if a vehicle like this is run on natural gas with tires filled with nitrogen, not oxygen, it improves tire wear and your fuel. It would be a more efficient way to collect brush from around town and to treat this as the haulers do and creating a scatter route where people call in ahead of time. The quadrant method has been accepted by most people in town, but oftentimes you have trucks running up and down streets looking for stuff to pick up when it's not there. Procedurally, that needs to be tightened up so this way, your trucks are only running down the streets where there's stuff to pick up, period. Also, in terms of concrete and bricks where people put those out, it's a company called Lodell that has a self-loading dump truck. Either one of our trucks could be retrofitted with this particular unit. So thus, you're saving money by not having to run a parade of vehicles to pick up this type of material around town. Or potentially, they could be procured on a recondition basis. For example, I have a couple of clippings here from a publication called Waste Advantage. They look to be, I know people like to get new, but under the circumstances, it could be Plan B. For about 16 grand, you could get a similar kind of vehicle. And there are any number of companies that provide computer-assisted routing in order to put a more comprehensive route together when it comes to picking up brush. I have one here called Arc Logix. There are any number of them to pick from. And it's also worth noting, now this is kind of an extreme example, and if television can't get these, my apologies, there needs to be a user fee put on as far as brush is concerned. To me, it's comparable to the god-awful leaf bags that where we used to throw our money away years ago.
I'm sorry, Jeff, I'm sorry to cause you, I can't see the picture from here. What is that?
Oh, this is, this is a house, and I won't identify where,
It's okay.
It's okay.
-with a giant mountain of brush-
Okay.
-that I wind up paying for.
Okay.
Now, it's fine that people are keeping their properties up, but in terms of defraying some of the cost, why not have a user fee? In Section 192 of the code, you have a standard service area that is defined as five by five by three, and after that, however you want to set up a rate structure, it could be done. Some, and now, if there's a storm, heaven forbid, well, then it's there for the common good, but most people don't take advantage of this, so why not a small user fee to help defray the cost? Also, a potential moneymaker, and this is a fairly new situation in terms of the tree program, and this comes to us from the October 2nd edition of the Buffalo News, where did all the firewood go? There are shortages developing. Now, we're taking out old trees and whatnot. Perhaps there might be a way for us to sell old trees to local companies that provide firewood to people, since they can't travel great distances because of disease and whatnot without going into the woods, pardon the pun, but that might be another way to generate some new revenue. Under Highway One, and this again is from the March 7th edition of the Buffalo News, there's a Buffalo company called Unique Paving Materials, and they've developed a new mixture, this is in the town of Little Valley in Cataragus County, and they claim that their mixture will last longer than the surrounding roads when it comes to fixing potholes. We do have a number of those. I'm the guy who sends the shopping lists and all the time of where they are.
Thank you.
While it costs a little bit more than Cold Patch, in terms, in the long run, it may cost less to have to go back and refill and refill and refill if this material is any good. And also, even while it's not officially listed in Highway One, sidewalk replacement, the crews were on my street this year to take care of a couple of bad trip hazards, and they did a fine job, but, and this is in the coupons that come to our homes, a company called Concrete Solutions, where they lift the block up, clean out underneath, put the block back, and they claim that they can save one-half to two-thirds the cost of new concrete. Maybe there's something that can be done jointly between the town and Public Works so the sidewalk repairs can be done less costly than it is right now, even though the guys do a fine job. This isn't a performance presentation, this is a money presentation. Highway Three, the trucks. Longer term, there's a number of things that can be done to save money. I alluded to earlier, and there's two companies, Parker Hanifin and Vehicle Inspection Systems, that offer nitrogen filling systems instead of oxygen for tires. You don't even have to take my word for it, go up to Dunn Tire at Ridge Hudson Plaza, they do this for their customers as a matter of routine. In terms of the wear and tear that all of our vehicles take throughout the year, this would be a way to save money investing in this equipment. There's also, and this is from the April 16th edition, 2007 of Waste News, the EPA has a Smart Way program, and one of the things that they feature here is a tire put out by Michelin called X1. Again, this would be for highway use, and the one company that they cited here, because of the fuel savings generated by using this particular type of tire on their heavy vehicles, saves about eighteen, one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars a year per truck, as well as using retreads for your non-steering weight-bearing vehicles on the back of each heavy truck. Some of them are single axle, but for the ones that are double axle, using retreads, again, can save some money, especially given the kind of mileage that goes through throughout the year. Second lastly is the Seabreeze Water District, which I'm sure, as we all know, has had its issues over the years. Currently, this is costing the town in the budget over nine hundred thousand dollars, with revenue making up about two-thirds, give or take. And it was our understanding from years ago that once all the bonds were paid off, then we could take a look at doing something with this. The obvious answer is to open negotiations with the Monroe County Water Authority as far as them doing a tuck-in acquisition. If that doesn't work out, let me offer two suggestions as far as publicly-held firms that are involved with municipal water programs around the country. One is Aqua Water Systems, and the other is American Water. I have no interest in these companies, I learned about them by watching CNBC. That could be Plan B as far as getting this situation tightened up, which, as we know, has been a problem for many years. Last item is zombie homes. We do have a few in town, and again, from the October 22nd edition of the Buffalo News in the town of Lockport, they offer auction incentives to purchasers of foreclosed homes. I can think of a couple offhand. It's sad that they're here, but unfortunately, they are. And perhaps there's a way to do the same thing here by offering incentives to purchasers to get zombie homes that are, that do not have for-sale signs in front of them back into play. That's mortgage tax revenue, that's sales tax revenue, and it also eliminates the need for town crews to go after overgrown grass and things of that nature. There also was a time when the building department actually kept a list of empty homes around town. That costs nothing, and maybe that can be reinstated so people can call in and say, yeah, there's an empty home with no for-sale sign, here's the address. Regardless what the circumstances are, now you know what you have as far as inventory, and then you can go out and talk to realtors and others, or take, do what Lockport has done. Again, that becomes a money-generating thing down the road. In conclusion, I agree with the cover letter that the supervisor wrote in the budget, where he says Aronacoit taxpayers already pay enough in property taxes, I agree. I also know that what you're trying to accomplish with the budget is all well and good. I also know that I've seen this movie before, and it doesn't always end well. The last time we went down the road of several years of no tax increases in the face of increasing costs, that led to the 1991 budget blow-up, which was, for those of you not here, the beginning of a ninety percent increase in our taxes and several years of open unhappiness around here. I don't know about anyone else, I don't feel like going down that road a second time. You need to be careful, and just say, we can do more, and we can do more, and hold the line. It was tried once, it failed, please don't put this, put us in that position a second time. And that's my message.
Jeff, what municipality was it with the zombie homes?
This wasn't, I can always make your copy of the article.
Lockport?
In Lockport. Yeah, in Lockport. They're going to be offering buyers of homes at their tax floor closure auction incentives. The city has money available for low-interest loans for purchasers who live in the house, and to reduce the number of empty homes that they have there.
Thank you. One more. You had mentioned a couple of specific code issues with specific properties, but you didn't want to get into the address in terms of the garbage dumpsters and whatnot. Would you be able to contact us and give us that list?
Nick Weatherby has version four of the list.
Got it, thanks.
It just needs to be-
Version four.
Unfortunately, it's one of those things.
Fantastic. Thanks, Jeff. Okay, the next speaker signed up tonight is Fred Squiccherini.
Good evening. Fred Squiccherini, 3360 Culver Road. As a point of clarification, I'm also the president of the Aronacoit Chamber of Commerce. I chose to speak this evening to express my extreme pleasure over two significant town achievements. The first, the completion of the Aronacoit's real first comprehensive master plan. This document will now guide our town into a very bright and beautiful future with purposeful direction and a clear vision. The second achievement, I believe, utilizes the same vision. When constructing the 2015 budget, the focus on not increasing the tax rates, the reorganization of town departments, the enhancements, investment of our town services, and the commitment to public safety will all create a better Aronacoit. I believe our town is experiencing a renaissance. Regardless of the neighborhood, you can witness growth, redevelopment, and improvements, and an excitement for our Aronacoit future, so I ask that you keep up the good work.
Thank you, Fred. The next person signed up is Monica O'Brien.
Good evening.
Monica.
I just had a question, a few people in the back had. The two town council members that are absent, do they have a chance to view the meeting, or they read the minutes, or how does that work?
Yeah, absolutely, yep. The meeting is recorded, they'll have a copy of it. Also, one of them is on the way, she had a family emergency in the hospital today, but she'll be here any minute, so.
And there's a way for them to review it either-
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yep. And to clarify, we're not going to vote on anything tonight either, so that's why we're here, to receive your input, and then that'll take place at another time, so.
Understood. So, the name gives it away. My name is Monica O'Brien, and I am Peter O'Brien's wife, but I am here today as a community member and a mother of three, soon to be four, young children that are living in Aronacoit. Cutting the Parks and Recreation Director for the town is short-sighted at best. It's frustrating to me as a community member that you would take something so successful and change it with what I believe to do, non-do consideration. I've struggled with this issue and tried to separate myself from the personal side of it, so that I might try to see what's really happening, other than political reasons or to offer someone else a different position down the line. So what I've based this on is reviewing the articles in the paper, the letter sent to the concerned citizens, and the article recently in the Aronacoit Post, and to me, it doesn't add up. For example, you cite the need to cut administrative costs and increase direct services, but one of the slides said that we are bringing in a planning and zoning administrator. Isn't it true that Supervisor Bellows, since you took over, we actually added a chief of staff, as well as an administrative assistant that didn't exist before? So how do you presume to tell the community members that this is being done in order to cut administrative costs? Regarding the article that appeared this Thursday, November 6th, it would be today, I guess, it does cite that there are landmark investments in our Parks and Recreation programs, and nowhere in this article does it say that we're cutting the director. Knowing many people in this town, I believe you're trying to pull the wool over our eyes. If this was such a good idea, why was there not even a paragraph dedicated to the reasons why you're making this cut? Because if I read this and only this, I wouldn't know there was any cut in that department, no less the leader. You stress the value of the department in this article, but you're cutting the leader. How much money would we save if you cut the leader of each department in this town? Why are you cutting this leader? A question that's come up for myself, as well as many others, is where is the savings? We all have a heart for savings, not paying more taxes, so please, correct me if I'm wrong. The proposed budget adds a new recreation leader to the two hundred forty-two thousand dollars. It keeps the special events coordinator to the two hundred fifteen thousand dollars. It provides a raise to the Public Works Commissioner, and it includes a raise to the recreation supervisor. Is that, that not more than the salary of the Parks and Recreation Leader? What I believe you're doing is divvying up the responsibilities, and it will end up spending more money down the line, and that in doing so, you'll end an era of the Parks and Recreation Department. So I ask each of you, as board members, have you spoken to the community members about this change? Have you heard from the community members? What is their response? Have you ever seen a turnout like this at a public hearing? Have you heard from community members that support this change, and why do they support it? We all know that the facilities and programs created by the Parks and Recreation Department over the past thirty-four years have had a positive impact on this community. Piecing together this department by adding someone with little or no experience as a recreation leader and giving more responsibilities to the DPW Commissioner does not allow for any growth in this department. It's as if we're saying, it's been a great thirty-four years, but we've reached our peak, and we don't need to go any further. I compare this to saying, let's get rid of the fire chief and add another firefighter. There'll be no issues with that, just more direct services. Or get rid of the grocery manager and add another cashier. The pharmacy manager can take care of the administrative duties. Or perhaps more close to home, let's get rid of the library director and add staff, because the DPW Commissioner can certainly oversee the operations. The overwhelming majority of the people that I've spoken with that supported this Democratic Board in the elections said that they did so because they wanted to invest in young families. They believed it when you said, we're at a crossroads, and it's time to move forward. This move goes against those ideas. I can tell you for this young family that will most likely leave the town of Aronacoit, because we want to raise our children in a town where we feel a part of the community and that those visions are invested in. Approving this budget does not invest in young families, it does not attract new families, and I ask that you listen to the feedback from those that are here and that have contacted you, and that you represent us and make an educated decision on this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Monica. The next speaker signed up is Emily Mendalia. Is Emily here?
Sure, you'll have to have a partner.
Okay, no problem. I'm sorry, sir, what's your name?
My name's Tom O'Brien.
Okay.
I've heard everything that's been said in the room. One of the, in preparing for this meeting, I think I was one of four people, it looked like, that watched your video from your meeting last week, the presentation to your board of what you gave tonight, and I was surprised that I thought in that, pretty much what Monica said, in the administrative reorganization, it wasn't itemized exactly what that reorganization was, specifically eliminating the position of director and Parks and Rec. And one of the things that also seems, seems to be missing here is the definition, some people are pinpointing administrator, I think, in that, okay, let's get rid of, rid of the administrative salaries and get the people that are out there working the programs and doing the job. It seems to be the interpretation that it's pretty quick to say, all right, we, I'm not, I've been working in the business world for forty-five years, not, not in government, and it's easier in the business world, in sales, if the guy doesn't sell, then he's not producing, and there's no point in keeping him on. But in this situation, it seems like the director of Parks and Rec has been producing, and he's not just an administrator, he's somebody that has his heart and soul and passion for the town, and that should be considered, and that's-
Thank you.
All that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker signed up is JP O'Brien.
Supervisor Bellows, on our town board. This is Kate McKenna, she's next on the list, so-
Oh, okay.
She's just up with me. Brand-new residents, just moved two months ago. Very excited to move here. Went to high school here, saw the good things, followed it recently, all the great developments, very excited to come here, especially to eventually raise a family. So I'm just here to say that I think it's wrong to eliminate the- to say that I think it's wrong to eliminate the director of Parks and Recreation. Obviously, my last name might not give that statement justice, but I have worked for Recreation Department for three years. I've been part of town government for over 10 years, so I know the ins and outs of the town government. And I just do not see how it could possibly work without, as Monica said, a leader in that position. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, I, I don't know if I can make it out. I think it's AJ Pishi or, okay. I'll skip to the next one. And then I didn't call you and you know you signed up. You're up next, I promise. Because I think it's a, it's two initials and a last name. Starts with a P. No? Okay. Next speaker is Kelly O'Connor.
My name is Kelly O'Connor and my family and I have lived in town for more than a decade. I'm here tonight to try and understand how Supervisor Bello can say one of the priorities of the 2015 budget is to make substantial investments in Parks and Recreation programming by extracting the director of Parks and Recreation from the department and placing the entire department under the direction of the Department of Public Works. I take issue with the fact that the town is not seeing any direct savings with this personnel cut. In fact, the supervisor is planning to hire someone else to try and fill the current director's shoes, along with handing out raises and buying a new DPW truck. I understand that under the current director's tenure, the Department of Public, of Parks and Recreation was self sufficient. It brought in funding from programming to cover all costs of the department. So, instead of using the department as an example of cost cutting measures for the town, for the entire town government and doing more with less, as all taxpayers would like to see, our supervisor and board decide to dismantle the department and fire the hands on leader. I do not think people looking to move into our community will see a new bucket truck and raises for staff members as a prime example of the town's commitment to enhance the community for young families. We have an outstanding recreation program that serves the needs of so many young families in this and surrounding communities that it only makes sense that in order to increase the programming within the department, you need someone who lives and breathes Park and Recreation like Peter O'Brien. The only reason the board is able to, to provide such drastic increases in the programming for the coming year is because of the leadership and commitment of the current director. Once the visionary of the programming is gone, the staff will squander any momentum Peter has provided and the department will not be able to live up to the commitments set forth by the supervisor in the letters to the editor and the press releases we've seen regarding the budget. What education and background does the Commissioner of Public Works have to qualify him to run the Parks and Recreation Department? I am sure he is unaware of the trends in cost benefit analysis for kids programming as it relates to healthcare and insurance costs, social benefits, reduced juvenile delinquency, and the better sense of self. It is foolish for you to sit here and think that by eliminating an administrative position, hiring a less qualified person to fill in and consolidating a department will enhance the programming and be better for this town. It would be worth your time to consider another avenue of so called cost savings so that the leadership and commitment Peter O'Brien has to this position, his fellow employees and his town is not taken from our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is John Miller.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just want to point out that I am a data specialist for the Hilton School District and I've been in school and district administration for the last five years. So, I have an understanding of the complexities by which I'm going to talk about tonight. Change is difficult. When change is introduced, emotions are inevitable. And when emotions get involved, the intended message can easily be lost or muddled. Perceptions of the truth can be quickly altered. So, I am here tonight to talk about data. Data can invoke an emotional response, but data itself is emotionless. Changes of this magnitude are not made by waking up one day and saying, let's restructure. This type of change is a direct result of diligent research into trends occurring both locally, within the state, and nationally related to town functions and more specifically Parks and Recreation, as well as rigorous data gathering and analysis within our town organization to identify our strengths and our areas of focus. So, this leads me to my main question. What data was used to justify a proposed cut of this magnitude? And I'm referring to the Parks and Recreation Director. Maybe I've missed something, but the only reason I have heard to justify this reorganization is budget, which I understand. Okay. Since this is the only reason I've heard, let's talk about the data for a minute. Monica earlier went through some of the numbers. Current budget director earning $70,000. Special events coordinator, $15,000. Director of Public Works is an increased, getting an increased bonus. Recreation supervisor getting an increase. Creation of a recreational leader, $42,000. If you really add it all up, it looks like it's a total of $73,000, which is more than what the current budget or what the current director is making. Now, let's, okay, maybe I don't see the whole picture because I don't see the lines of everything. Let's put that argument totally aside. Okay. Let's change it. Let's assume the numbers add up. It all works as, as stated. Let's look at another layer of data. The data I have seen relates to what we are expecting in this coming year. So, earlier you showed, here are the percentages that are increasing. Great. We want that for our kids and for our community. That's excellent. But, that data does not relate to why the director of Parks and Rec is the one that needs to be cut. Okay. If we need to cut X number of dollars from the budget, which we are assuming will happen with what is being proposed, what research have we done from a local standpoint, within the state, within the national standpoint to support the decision that this is the position that needs to be cut? Do we have evidence that a change of this magnitude is actually successful? And I don't mean successful for one year, but over time. Like, is there something that's telling us, yes, this is a model that's working. It's going to work for us. So, in closing, I want to go back to my main question. What data are we using to justify this cut? Thank you.
Thank you, John. The next speaker signed up is Lindsay Snyder. Is Lindsay here?
Hi. My husband and I are both lifelong residents of Arandaquay and we chose to return to raise our two children here. We regularly utilize town playgrounds, parks, and programs. I confidently take my kids to these parks knowing they are well maintained and I enjoy using the programs because I appreciate that there's variety and that they are offered to be run by quality instructors. My concern is that you are cutting the Parks and Rec Director, Parks and Rec Director that I believe has been the one to ensure that these things have been maintained. Specifically, I'm concerned that this department is going to be now under the DPW. I unfortunately have had to utilize DPW because of concerns on our property and I have not been met with a great response. At one point last year, I made a phone call and expressing a concern after we encountered thousands of dollars of damage to our property that was the town's responsibility. And it took a week and I heard nothing. I called and I was told it would be at least another week before I heard any response. Finally, I got a response from a secretary, which did not answer any of our questions that affected both myself and three neighbors. We still have not heard anything from the Commissioner despite us asking that he come out and examine the property, which he had acknowledged was a responsibility of the town. My concern is that this is the type of attention that will now be given to the Departments of Recreation. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speakers who signed up. Was anybody else here wanted to address the board without an opportunity? Richard.
Richard Barone, 154 Hallwood Drive. First of all, I wish to compliment the supervisor on the budget. I've worked on eight town budgets when I sat up there and it's not easy to keep that tax rate flat. I'm sure there's other revenues that have been helping you do that to make up the spending increase on the budget. My concern, I've lived in this town 48 years. I've lived 40 years on the east side and the last nine years or so on the west side. I've walked every one of the streets in this town many times over the years because I ran for office and I helped other people run for office. So, I know this town intimately. And I can say this with certitude and with facts, that this town is in decline. One, the property values have gone down after you adjust for inflation primarily because of the high school taxes. Town Board in the last five years have not raised the tax rate and that's helped. Rental properties are going up. I bought two rental properties in the town that were homes, but they couldn't sell them at any price. If you look at the real estate market, they're putting houses up for sale at $10,000, $15,000 lower than the assessed value. And you mentioned that the assessments have gone down and that's the reason. The Democrat in Chronicle some years ago indicated that after you adjust for inflation, the house values in Arandaquay went down 30%. That was about 10 years ago. If you look at the real estate section in the paper every Saturday, which I have been doing for years, you will see the median price about the lowest in the whole county, except for the city, of course. My concern is taxes will hurt a town, of course, but there's another factor that also hurts the town. A person comes down the street and sees two, three cars on the lawn, sees a dump truck in the driveway with construction equipment in the driveway. They're going to buy a house next to a house with a dump truck and construction equipment in the driveway? Or how about the house that is on the corner of Portland and Coronado? Usually, there are four cars on the lawn, at least two, usually four. I filed complaints several times. I have walked the houses probably at least 500, 600 houses in the last two years because we've had a library proposal and we had a school budget. I've walked on the east side of town in the last two years and the west side. It seems the west side has a lot more cars parked on lawns than the east side, for one. I walked, almost every street has a car parked on the front lawn. In some cases, they're parked on the right of way between the sidewalk and the roadway. Complaints were filed in the last two years on the previous administration and also recently. Sign ordinance also has been violated. My concern is enforcement. I think that adds to the problem of the value of the housing and who wants to live here. So, if you get somebody who has the money and they come here and they see a dump truck, and this is constant, on Coronado at the curve before it goes into Drake. Domicello is the company and they're running a business out of a residential house. Constantly, there are at least two pickup, construction vehicles there, dump truck from time to time. And right now, for the last two weeks, there is a commercial trailer with commercial road equipment in it. Now, I have a friend who, her parents were seniors, disabled. He was a World War II veteran and he had some pots on the front lawn and something in the backyard. And the code enforcement came down on them like a ton of bricks. They were fined $500 and was stuck on our taxes. I tried to help them in that matter. So, the question I have is this, Mr. Supervisor. Do we need more code enforcement people? Is there a problem with the way the thing is configured in the enforcement department? Or do we need to put more fines out there? Some years ago, this town revised the schedule of fines. I have done requests under the Freedom of Information Law, asking for in the past two or three years, the list of fines, and I don't recall ever getting a response indicating that these people have been fined. Look at U-Haul. You've got five 10-foot-high whip sails, which I know you're going to put in the new code as being a violation. Look at Rite Aid on the corner of Hudson and Titus. Every light pole has two signs on it. Can't read them unless you turn your head 90 degrees. So, what's the first impression someone comes into this lovely town? And I love this town, so that's why I've been involved all these years. Cars parked on lawns, dump trucks. Rid Road looks like a carnival with these signs. I can understand you need to have communications to sell your product, but let's take an example of enterprise car rental. Three signs on the building, legal. A standing pole sign, fine. They found it necessary to put two signs and seven light poles about two years ago. They took them down only under my complaint. They claimed they were going to come to the town and I think they realized they weren't going to get approval for about 12 different signs on light poles. So, I have to compliment you for trying to do something with the sign ordinance. I know it's a work in progress. It's a difficult thing. Lawn signs on grassy areas or commercial areas. But the biggest thing is the residential area. If you get the lesser buyer with less money, what that lesser buyer is going to do is say, I can't buy the house for X because of the high taxes. I can only buy it for X minus 10%. So, the housing values are going down, relatively speaking, after you adjust for inflation. These are facts. They, you know, and we've had two realtors in the past, both Stephen Walther, was quoted in the Arandaquay Post some years ago, and also the late Mr. Carrot. He did a six-page report to the town board some years ago that the high property taxes in this town depressed the values of the houses and a difficulty in selling them. But the other thing that I'm very concerned about, you can't, guys can't do anything about the school taxes. That's out of your purview. But you can do something about the impression people get when they drive down the street and they see those problems. Now, I understand also someone mentioned to me, you're looking at the question of rental property and the question of C of O, which came up a few years ago under Mary Ellen Hayman's supervisory ship. I've been a landlord in the city for 19 years. I recently sold that property. I don't have a problem with C of Os. I don't have a problem with inspectors. I always pass. In this town, you have registration, which was a good step. It's my understanding that most of the problems we have with rental property are the outside of the property. I would suggest that if you're going to do something with rental property, strengthen the code on the outside appearance and the environment of the property. But once you get into a C of O where you're going to have to walk into the building, you're going to have to hire at least one, maybe two code enforcement officers to do inspections. I own two rental properties in this town. One I bought for $20,000 less than the assessment. Three-bedroom ranch in western Arandaquay, family room, two-car garage, full basement, two baths, the whole bit, in a nice area. $87,000. That house was assessed at $116,000. I'm buying another one over on Teakwood. $60,000, assessed for about, about $70,000. I fixed my properties up. Now, every landlord is an absentee landlord because they're not living in that house. So, that argument they're absentee landlords is if there's something bad is wrong. But I know that we have some landlords in this town that don't even live in the state and don't live in this town. But you need to keep that buyer that has the money, that can pay the price without being discouraged when they drive down that street and they see cars parked on lawn or trucks and things like that. Whatever you need to do, realignment of the code enforcement department, hire another person perhaps, although I don't know what that does to your budget, or get those fines out there. As you know, I'm involved with the group and I'm tempted to start doing something publicly, both on the commercial signs and also people who are violating that code from the point of view of embarrassment. They look at, these property owners are violating the code and hurting the appearance of this town. So, please take a look at that and something has to be done because I remember when I was a councilman some years ago, no one ever parked on their lawn. when I was a councilman some years ago, no one ever parked on their lawn. I never saw anyone on their lawns. And I walked pretty much most of the town even then. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sheridan?
Hello, David Sheridan, 75 Thomas Avenue. Uh, just a quick one. If I'm running a business and I have a successful leader, and my business is growing, and I chop the head off, and I give it to other people, my business would falter. I think the same thing would happen if here, if your people are a business and you get chopped off, and we bring, and we bring someone in and distribute duties, it's also going to falter. I think the same thing would happen with our Parks and Recreation. And I won't bore you with my, how far I've walked or whatever, but, my history, but I worked at Clover Pools for a number of years, and is thinking about the flapping signs. When we did East Ridge Road, and Clover has access on two locations, so our customers would thank us because we put some flapping signs up on the corners to show them where they could enter or exit. And someone came to the town and complained about all that, so people had no idea where to go. So we spent about 200 bucks and had to throw them out. So maybe, Mr. Barone, you could send Clover a couple hundred dollars, they could pay for the signs we had to throw it because of you. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sheridan. I don't, I don't know your name, sir.
Uh, my name is Arthur Graham. I live at 39 Sylvia Lane.
Arthur Graham. Okay.
And, uh, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'd like to take a little bit of a different approach to this issue of Parks and Recreation. First, I noticed in the, uh, slide of organization that Parks has been pulled from Recreation. First of all, that is a mistake. Parks are where people go to play, to go to recreate. Those are the places where we do do our programs. And so pulling out Parks from Recreation is a mistake, because it is not just about maintenance and lawn care. Okay? So I think that's, that's short-sighted. The issue of who the Parks and Rec Department will report to. Again, I noticed on your slide that it is a, somebody that's head of Community Services, and you have not identified who that person is. And on the other side is the Public Works person. Uh, and you still keep a person in Public Works as a director. Well, you all know that directors of departments are, that part of their job is to advocate for their part of the budgetary pie. And so the Public Works Department will continue to be able to advocate to you for their part of the budget pie, which is necessary. Public Works are a vital function. Whereas now, if you continue with your reorganization, there will be no one to advocate for Parks and Recreation effectively, because whoever is running it has to report through that person that is head of Community Services. And so I feel that that is a mistake that will allow Parks and Recreation to slide into oblivion in this town. Where do I get my information? I've been a Parks and Rec professional for a quarter of a century, and I have been a member of the faculty at the Covet Rockport Department of Recreation Leader Studies for 18 of those. So I have a little bit of expertise in this area. I have taught management administration. I have taught community planning and development. I created a course in it for our undergrads. And so I really feel that whoever this person is that, uh, will take over Parks and Recreation is, because there's no director, they will not have the same effectiveness as a director would have. And I'd also like to leave you with one other thought. We all have to eat, so there will always be jobs in food service. But you know what? We all have to recreate. Pull the part, pull the word apart. It means to recreate, to rest and restore oneself. We have to do it. Do you know that in year 2012, the people in this country spent over $2.5 trillion on recreation leisure in this country? Maybe you should start investing in those types of venues to bring people into our town. Thank you.
Anyone else? Was there anyone else who would like to address the board? Yep. Come on forward.
Hi, my name's Linda Borden, 105 Russell Avenue. Um, I am one of the volunteers for the Arundic quite farmers market. I have one thing to say and one thing only, and it should suffice for any long speech. If it's not broke, don't fix it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else who would like to address the board? Sir?
Hi. Tim O'Brien. When I first got here, to be honest, I just came to support my brother, obviously possibly going through a tough time. So a couple of different things going through my mind as I sat here. Number one, you know, just support and proud that people came out. Number two, thinking of coming up with my own sort of, you know, rousing speech to try and provide some sort of hope, but then I also kind of remembered, somebody told me as this went down, you know what? The mayor may not matter, because in a couple of weeks, you guys are going to decide. The people don't get a chance to vote. So it's essentially what I wanted to tell you, it's really up to you guys, are you going to listen? And I'm kind of a, you know, I don't live in the town of Arundic quite, so I just, you know, sat back there and listened. And I heard it pretty loud and clear. But again, the people don't get to vote on this. You guys are the ones that are going to have to decide. So in a couple of weeks, as I'm told, you kind of sit down amongst each other, and it's going to be on you as public, you know, officers, are you going to listen to actually what the people have said? And then, you know, that's my main point to you right now, is are you going to sit here and listen? It's easy to kind of nod your heads and, and to kind of go about your business, um, but in a couple of weeks, are you going to think when you're trying to vote on which way you're going to go with this thing? Are you really going to listen to what happened here tonight and the amount of support? And that's my main challenge for it to you, and, um, good luck with that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Was there anyone else who'd like to address the board? No? Okay. Uh, seeing no other speakers, uh, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? In a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. I want to, uh, before we hit and adjourn, I just want to thank all the speakers for coming here tonight, and thank you for your input. It's valuable to hear from members of the community. We really do appreciate the time and effort that you put in to be here tonight and to spend time away from your families to come and, uh, and share your views about the budget. We really do appreciate that. Um, and, uh, so with that, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn? And a second? I think I just had a motion to close the hearing, right, Barbara? Before?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Right. So now can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? In a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. We're adjourned.